All right, folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Sorry to interrupt you back there, but this is the best part of the night for me, so I wanna get as much, I wanna get started. So, welcome, everyone. It is January 24th at 5:00 PM. So we'll officially call this work session to order. Surprise, surprise, lost my agenda. Luckily, I know there's only a few things on there, so. Please take us away with the district improvement plan.
Thank you for your dedication and commitment to the program. We'll be providing an update on our district improvement plan based on goals that were created in 2021, 2022. When our 2022, 2027 district improvement plan, district strategic plan is approved, the district improvement plan will be adjusted for alignment. And to review the plan, you notice that there is no update on Lucy's conference, which was written in the district improvement plan in 2021, 2022. And that is because there is a variety of curriculum that is being used to teach reading at the elementary level. Once I am done, we will have an opportunity to get here from our secondary principals, Mr. Christopher and Mr. Blackson, present their school improvement plans. They will begin with their 10-minute presentations with the public practice and walk us through the plans they have out in the state for schools. So, the district improvement plan that was presented. Has three areas of focus. There is the academics, there is the social movement learning, and there is race and equity. And what I did was I went through and highlighted the very last column where it says media review and just provided some feedback as to what we are doing in each of those sections. There was an opportunity for review, and if there are any particular questions, I will answer those questions. Knowing that I wanna be mindful that we give our, I'll have time to hear from our principal folks in their school.
So I guess one question, this is Andrea. Where you talk about Policy 2401, the financial education one. I guess I just wanted to make sure when, so you say the update here is that you're meeting with, I think, the math teachers at Foster High School on that subject. So, the financial education, what I'm interested in is a kind of wider scope than just, yeah, the district-wide, because, I mean, there's state standards relating to, you know, financial education, which covers K-12. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, when you're thinking about this, that you, you're thinking about system-wide and not just the high school level. Okay?
I've got a random question, but how many students enroll in our first bilingual class?
Well, we are hoping to have one classroom.
Appreciate that update.
There are no more questions, I will turn it over to our principals.
Yes, just one other question, there's, so when you talk about the dual language program, so we're taking, going Spanish, do we not also have some PK programs related to Somali?
We do with, that is what's now.
Yeah.
And what we have discussed will be Spanish-based program.
Yeah, I know dual language, particularly when the state talks about it, we talk about dual language and heritage language. So, I just wanna make sure that we also recognize, we also have a Somali pre-school program going as well. Yeah, okay, okay.
Thank you for this, it's a few more, so.
All right, we'll begin with Mr. Allison, I'm saying, I should want to miss you.
All right.
I'm joined now by you at, I don't know, our House of Black Board meeting, and it was great seeing a lot of you in our culmination. We can solve areas, just for children. First slide is kind of our demographic slide. One thing that really stood out to me just was the size of our Latinx population. And it really does give criticism of our need for that Spanish bilingual program, as well as probably filling that other liaison position. Because Alberta's running itself and I get in a, with that, with that big of a population and one person. Yeah, so that, and of course, I had the luxury of being cooped up in my room for 13 days over the winter break. And so I got, I learned how to data mine, so I didn't get some new languages out there. So David, sorry, I won't get locked in your room, you gotta do something. But yeah, so I'm good, it's an interesting thing, and this, the percentage of the ML population too, significant. Which kind of really needs to all work for the year. Play, like to miss. School data-wise, at both the eighth grade, I already wrote targets, and then did include a, after I got your questions, some data around where kids were regarding to like level one, if they were two or more grade levels below or not. And I, since we just got data back, that we just finished the second, I read, so we added that, so you can see that there was some movement in both reading and math, decreasing that, the size of that potus, the group of students that were two or more graded levels below.
So, first off, we go to the top one, this one isn't quite making sense to me.
Okay, I did, I get it, I'll factor it through, because I saw it here, and I was like.
It looks like you're predicting to go backwards, is what I understand.
Yeah, yeah, can you go back to the other slide, please? What was the highlight? So basically, what it was, we were, what we talked about with I-Red was, if I'm a student who is currently at or above grade level, then my target would be typical growth. But if I'm a student that is below grade level, I wanna shoot for the stretch goal. And so based on what our numbers were, there were only, like in math, there were only 7% of the students that were at or above grade level in math. That's why there's a target for 7% of them meeting that goal, and then the other 93% are shooting for their stretch goal.
Yeah, that's.
I know, it's funky.
Well, it's also not the way any of the other schools did it, so I think I really like to have some consistency. So, so, yeah, the, basically, I mean, so in 21, 22, so if they take eighth grade reading, you know, we had 42% of the students achieve typical growth across the board, everybody. And, and 15% of them achieved a stretch growth. So, you know, for 22, 23, I would expect that the goal for typical growth would be some number bigger than 42. Just to be so that we're consistent. And then the stretch growth, you know, wouldn't be, the stretch growth, we have 15, so I would expect it to be, that's why I thought originally these numbers were just flipped, and so.
We were just looking at it from a different, a different angle, in the sense that, because we want everybody showing growth, right? And originally, we were talking about every kid would have a certain number of points of growth in I-Red, but what we discussed was like, if I'm above grade level, I'm not gonna get that 25% points of growth, because I'm already above. And if I'm significantly below, 25 probably isn't enough. So, we were, we were looking at the idea that if you're, if you're below, then we wanna shoot for that stretch. And so, and that's the percentage that they were at at the end of that first window. So that's where we put it, put those in, but I mean, I can see where it's confusing, because it's different way of looking at it.
Well, it's also different from the way the 21, 22 reported one way, and then 22, 23 reported another, right?
The 20, yeah, it's, last year's is based on where it ended up.
Yeah, right.
Versus, if I'm understanding and looking at like the 7% for eighth grade now, the 7% typical growth, that's your goal based on, my assumption that about 7% of the students are already at grade level, and so the hope is that they're gonna have that typical growth.
Yes.
So it's really, to me, feels like it's based off of the data that we actually have now, and making what seems like a realistic goal based on that data. Is that right?
That's.
Okay, which I, it makes sense why, like, it makes sense to me, and, and feels different for you, because I think, you know, I've, I've been confused trying to follow some of it, so I think it's just, that I can understand. I also understand the inconsistency is.
Yeah, if we're starting to have one school reporting, and one, and another school reporting another way, that's, that's gonna drive us all nuts. So, the other, the other question, so, yeah, it was this window one, window two thing, so. Right, I was wondering, so that's the fall, window one is what you're calling, the fall, and entered, when, window two is what you're talking, winter.
Yes.
And so then, you say, reading 35%, one grade level below and up, so that's the, that's the proficiency number, right? 35% and then 65% or two or more grade levels below. And then, okay, so you're, so we're seeing that between window one and window two, went from 35% one up to 40%. So that's an improvement, and then we went 65 to 60, it's also an improvement, because it's going down, that's why we want to go down. And then the same thing with math, okay, okay, I get that, that part of it. The other thing I would say about, you know, if you wanna report, kind of have a different way of looking at it within your school, I would say, fine, explain to your school, but when you're, and you're talking to us, I mean, consistency, I think is really important across, and then, so if you report it kind of a consistent way, and then if you also wanna report it the other way, you know, that's fine. That's what I would prefer. So they have consistency, because, so, and, and to be so clear here, so the second one, you're saying 20% of the students, you're trying to get to typical growth, because 20% of the students are already one or more grade levels, or on or above.
And then 80% trying to get to their stretch, because they're below grade level.
Okay, and then I, yeah, and then if we're talking about SMART goals, the A being achievable, to get 80% of the students that are three or more grade levels belong to hit their stretch goal, given the fact that last year you only got 15, that sounds wildly unrealistic, I mean, that's a good, you know, four-year goal or something like that, but it's not gonna be a good, a one-year goal. And so, you know, my question is, when we set these goals, I mean, a lot of times you said 100%, you know, I mean, of course, we want 100%, but the problem is, if that's the goal, and we never get there, then everybody just blows off the goal, you know, because it's like, no, we're never gonna get there, so why pay any attention to it? I'd rather have a realistic goal, and then, you know, let's hold some accountability to achieving whether you got it or you didn't, so anyway.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the stress growth? This conversation is actually helping me so much understand things, so thank you. Um, the stretch growth, regardless of how far behind they might be, for them to meet their stretch goal for, would that be getting them to grade level, or is it just an improvement?
No, it's an improvement.
Okay, so, in reality, that may not be a fully unrealistic, I, realistic thing, if we're thinking about what is that improvement look like, right? So it might be different for 20% of those kids, it might be, right?
Okay, so it's, I'm understanding that in here. This is breaking down to 100%, so you're gonna get 100% because you're basically having students kind of in two groups, either they're one or two or more. So, these seem like the targets based on the data that you have. So this is really, to me, looking like just, it's basically telling you how many students are falling into each one of those categories. So the SMART goal then would be, this is how many students are actually there, so how many, I mean, ideally, you'd want all of them to be able to get there, but to your point, when we're looking at the actual from last year, although that reporting from last year is probably different than the way that we're reporting it from this year, right? Because that's, we're looking at it in a different way, right? So if we're looking at that consistently, because I don't think this, the 21, 22 typical growth, was that based on the same criteria that we're doing typical growth for this year? Yeah, one or more grade levels.
I think, yes, with I-Red, and again, this is, this is the I-Red data.
Yeah, right.
Versus like the SBA data.
Right, right.
And like the math role later on is based on the SBA.
Right.
But what, SBA doesn't really have growth, they just have, you're measuring growth by moving, preventing proficiency as opposed to growth.
Yeah, but what I don't see from last year is 100%, like in the eighth grade math, between typical and stretch doesn't add up to 100%, whereas this year is.
Right.
So you're counting 100%.
I mean, when we looked at.
Yeah, comparing 21, 22, I mean, those are two different ways.
Absolutely, right, that's why I'm saying, that's why I think that's off a little bit, when we then start about the SMART goal and what it would look like.
Sounds like you may need some more.
Yeah.
Off to the next one, please. So our problem practice earlier is on our MLL students, and, and what I said, the state data indicates that we're, that they're not exited at the same rate that they're, that's, that's, we don't have current state data on that. It was based on the data that we have, right? But we, we know that we have work to do with our MLL students, so that's, that's the focus of it, and so we redesigned our MLL program. So we have coaches in place now that are working with, with the teachers primarily, and they're providing like coaching for those folks, modeling, they are intervening with some students at different levels, but primarily focuses on some, is getting the teachers really up to par, you know, with the adoption of the WEDA standards. It was really the best move for us, because the focus, the focus of it changes, students moving out of these pull-out individual classes and into their core classes, and also their elective classes. But, but really, when you look at the WEDA standards for each of those content areas, then that's where the coaches are leveraging that work with them, and honestly, our building PD, our Smart Wednesdays, our staff meeting time, in matter, if you come to Schulz tomorrow for Smart Wednesday, this is what it is, right? That's the focus of the work. It has to be. We have 33.7% or whatever it was of your students that are identified in the MLL. And we look at the literacy scores, that, that impacts everybody, so. Yeah, the shift in the model, we, we needed to make it, and it's, and it's the right move at the right time, and I think having those students in core classes with their peers, especially, and even the elective classes. I mean, gotta wanna come to school. If you never get to be in the electives, I mean, that's.
Yeah, so, so I think, so I think this is great, I think the focus, you're absolutely right. However, it's also true, I mean, I've been trying monitoring the students that have been in the LL, you know, long-term LL students, which like five and a half years. And that is not all an issue at all, so that's an issue back at the elementary school, because it's a heck of a lot easier to get them out, exit, you know, in elementary school. So, so I agree completely to what you're doing here, because I've seen a few years ago, those kind of separating classes and putting them back in 100%, but I think as a system, we need to also recognize that we need to do a lot more, more.
We haven't completely eliminated the language support, we still have AppExel.
Yeah.
Great, like grade seven and eight, and we also have a section that serves newcomers and kids who are emerging that are regular.
Sure, yeah.
But, but yeah, it's, it's, it's in the right direction. As far as reading, the focus of reading, the, our kind of our reading goal that I outlined before, we were talking about the scores being there, is what we're, the work that we're doing with Language Arts really tied, or in reading, ties in with our MLL work as well, and so across the board, we're implementing explicit vocabulary, guided reading, the Language Arts folks are using the FONAS and PANEL systems to identify where kids are struggling and do small group work. Thankfully, I have a phenomenal literacy coach, Hamilton, if you've met her, she's awesome. She's been in the classrooms all the time with the teachers, and we've done a lot of work with them in teams this year. We have a new team, we have like a new Language Arts team anyway. And so we've been working with them to align the units of study, and she's been doing individual coaching cycles with them. We've been doing peer walks together and things like that, so. And it really tying that literacy focus across the building. Her being in the library part of the time, the library circulation's way up, and they've really been utilizing that as a teaching space as well, so there's a lot of energy with the kids around reading this year. We still, we still have protected reading time in homeroom two days a week. Then they're also on I-Red software, so it's, that's moving in the right direction as well.
I just wanted to ask you, the reading, do you think that a, that a co-teaching model, I mean, so right now, you have, you know, basically one teacher, and then you have the coach that comes in sometime, right? Do you think a full, full-on co-teaching model would be? And the reason I ask that, let me tell you, because I went up to Rainier Prep, and they have, which is a middle school, you know, they have a full-on co-teaching model, which produces phenomenal results. I recognize that we don't have the money for that now, but I, you know, I'm really interested in that, because I'm trying to push that.
It's funny you say that.
Okay.
My, my, well, my literacy coach and one of my MLL coaches are going very quickly.
Okay, that's good.
See what they're doing.
Yeah, that's really.
We have co-teaching in Language Arts for our special ed.
Okay.
So, like, Ms. Norman, who teaches sixth grade, Ms. Rokenaki, they have collaboration classes, and she, they coach, she co-teaches Ava and Janet, and the special ed teacher co-teaching, that's. And we have that set up in, in grade six, or sorry, yeah, all three grade levels in Language Arts. But, but it would be interesting to see what it looks like across the board.
Right.
As a, as a full-on model.
Right, because and even if you do, I'd love to hear the results, because that's one of the things that they bring to the legislature to, we need huge increases in lab funding, which could be used for things like that, if we had it, so if we get results, let me know.
Okay. Math, the math team put together the, the goal, and I'll explain this goal through, because it's a little funky. But it's, basically what they did, they looked at the SBA data and identified the number of students that were at level one, and then they looked at the, how many, where the kids were, and the, and the kids that were kind of on the bubble within like maybe 10 points of moving up a level or more. And so that worked out to be 36% of students, so their goal was to really target that 36% that is right there outside of the the level bump, or whatever you wanna call it. And so that's the group that they were gonna try to monitor and see if that, if they had growth. They, they've done a lot already, they started the year off with a kind of a math retreat, and got together early, focused on getting their stuff aligned, and then we work with Agile Online, that's our, our curriculum is Agile Online, we don't have a dedicated back coach like we do for literacy, but we have a phenomenal relationship with Monica from Agile Online, and she's been working with us since we started, but being able to use some of my funds, I, I have, we, part of our purchase of, of the curriculum gives us coaching from her, but it's not a lot. And so we use some of our high-power friends to get more of her coaching. So she works with the team there. And then they really work to collaborate, collaborate to make sure that they're in alignment, and they've been great about their I-Red time, maybe Mondays, they give them 30 minutes on I-Red for the share. Then they are also focusing on having strategies across the con, in the math content. And math, and we tell a lot of math intervention, we want 80, I mean, sorry, math 180, enforcement, enforcement. And there was a question about how we know that's working well. The best, the best data I had, it was when we had student growth percentile data, which I loved.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that now, now that we're, had another round of SBA, I'm hoping they'll calculate, like after we assess the share, I'm hoping that they'll calculate that, because it was really useful data, but.
Well, I think, I mean, I really provide growth data, so we got.
Yeah, and I was looking at I-Red stuff, and it, and the growth looked pretty good in, in the math when he goes to my timer, not 180. All right, I'll talk to us, quickly, please. That's, sorry. For a social emotional role, we, we went to our CEE data and pulled out one of the, one of those strands, as far as students feel like they have somebody who knows them and cares about them. And some of the things that are listed there, the mindful, the mindful Mondays, those are from staff. Right, but we do check in and check out, we are using ruler in room room. And classrooms, it's nice, they've got their mood beaters up, and they're doing my, they're doing that moments with the students. For mental health, we're gonna be able to expert check yourself. And so the counseling team is really working to make sure they get to all homerooms, so they can be, do those quick brief, or the brief check-ins with kids, and then when, when they do, like, let's say, the three of them go to three different homerooms at one grade level one morning, and then some kids flag, and they immediately see those kids, right? So.
Was this the one you had the link to, or was it?
Yeah, I sent the link to, could make it work. I got it from Mr. Gray, so. And then Race Equity, we have a phenomenal team, and they've been looking hard for years, but they continue this year with planning, matter of fact, they were, they're part of our, they're active part of our leadership team, and so like when we have our, when we have our share out, that leadership team, Race Equity is one, Bruce's, that's reporting, and give a lot of input to the work, and they did a tremendous amount of work around the solidarity school-wide focus, and we had extended homerooms, and changed the schedule all out, just to, to really give the kids the time to dive deep in the work, so, yeah, they've been great. And then, kind of celebrations, but I think the thing I would highlight just is the restorative practice support, we have a, we have a team put together with the social emotional intervention specialists, and our re-engagement book, to really be able to work with students in a, in a proactive way, and, and also to help us work through a lot of situations where we're not having resort to exclusionary discipline. And it ties into the peer mediation too, because, matter of fact, we have peer mediation, obviously, sweet, and so. And yeah. We had, we had our first dance post-pandemic, and I think we had 250-plus kids at the dance, so the kids are loving being back to Spain. So, I know, I'm sorry.
I'm curious about the restorative practices, and kind of since that peer meet, well, I guess there's sort of, since you've been doing those, what benefit have you seen?
Well, I, one, I, with the peer mediation piece, and even some of the work with that team, small things that get, become big things don't become big things, right? So, yes, we still have typical things going on, all that, but I think it's, they help keep the lid on things, and I, and we don't end up with kids as suspended as often, because usually what happens is that things build, 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 and then they get to that explosive state. And then, that, right, but I think it's the, it's intervening before it gets to that critical mass. And, and then having kids be part of, the kids deal with the kind of lower-level things, they don't like, don't the heavy stuff on them, right? But they take ownership of a lot of that work, and then their peers see that too, which gives them a great opportunity for leadership in the building as well, in a positive way, because we have leaders, but some will be problems sometimes, right? So. Yeah, it's, it's, it's been challenging at times with certain behaviors. Challenging at times with certain behaviors, but, um. And when there are real safety issues involved, then you gotta go, you have to, you have to follow, so that's right. But, um, a lot of times people's feelings are hurt.
I mean.
And so this is how we avoid kids losing time in the classroom because people's feelings are hurt.
Can you give us a story, whether it's accurate or not, obviously without names, but. Kind of just.
Sure, um, and I can tie the check-in, check-out portion to it, because. And we, I think about a young lady that was. Really struggling with behavior and, um. Things. And and not coming to school, right, and just, and when we were there. Couldn't put our phones down, couldn't stand in the bathroom, hiding in the bathroom. And so then the trick was connecting them with one of that team. Who they felt like they had a connection with. And got them on the check-in, check-out, so then they would. They meet with them, they catch them in the morning, they give them their check-in sheet. They talk about their goal for the day and then they catch it, they'd be back with them at the end of the day. And over really a pretty short period of time, they started changing, turning those things around, right? And the trick was just. The the consistent connection, right, and positive messages. And sometimes it's hard. But we have a really good team and they're really, and in this individual's case. They're they're not missing school like they were before, we're not having those type. Really big behaviors, I mean, is it perfect? No. But it's moving in the right direction.
Great, thank you. Do we know? Is there any percentage of. Of the students that is getting up on these two, you know, sort of problems, like one percentage is helping soon.
I I don't, I mean, like we collect Swiss data on, um, like behavior and stuff like that, but. Uh, we, but I don't have it broken out off of that, but it's maybe something you could, what you're trying to figure out to collect.
It's it's one of those things like, I mean, I I I believe wholeheartedly in restorative practices. And I, you know, believe that like these types of interventions are the best to support young people and getting them, keeping them in the classroom and all those things. And as you know, like, it's also hard to quantify the value of those things. Um, and so if you're not someone like me that's already already bought in, like, you don't have to convince me, um, it it takes some of that. Data, unfortunately, um, so like, I I think that would be something really, you know, because we consistently are talking about. How do we take these things that are working well at one school and. And expanding them across our district, um, and it it is, you know, some of those, those, those stories, those little pieces of data. Could then help us go and find more funding or or be able to do something else, so not to say like go with that data, so we have the data, but like it. I want to be able to speak to the benefit of those things that other people can understand how much we need them.
Yeah, and more story than even if the students can. Write a story. I just want to make sure in their time.
Yes.
Yep.
You got twenty-seven minutes. And I noticed, I think we have, um, Clint along as well. I think. Maybe I made that up, but.
So we are back here at Hampton School, how do they do? We'll have a setup, I imagine, kind of a regression here, but this is cool too. So to bring out about demographics here, uh, I did notice there seemed to be a mistake with, uh, medical margin, they're going Pacific Islands. About one sixty percent there. Uh, we see our highest percentage of slanted spoken, uh, on for our foster students, let's say. That was their apologies on that, see that. Uh, but our languages other than English spoken seeing same stuff across the district, uh, Spanish, uh, Somali, Vietnamese, Spanish. And a quick look at some of our data from last year, the graduation rates, uh. You know, the honest, honestly, I was quite surprised at our black African-American. Uh, state of the graduation and citizen percentage, that is going to be an area we focused on for this year, uh. Rest of this year and both the city and future. Not just on black, but Spanish as well, so working on those areas, uh, we see there's a huge gap, uh, the host students that house in the building. Uh, so we focused on all those students, everybody is old.
I guess before you get off, I want to just, so I track this, you know, by race over many years and. Last year was a, was a bit of a anomaly for our buttons are not typically that low. And so, and they they, you know, like all the groups, they'll go up and down and up and down, so, I mean, it's it's great, you know, the focus there, but it's. We don't have a perpetual gap that goes year after year after year between the races, which is, uh, which is good, but. Um, anyway, the one, the one other thing I did want to bring up is that. This, this year we had. The highest graduation rate, you know, in the last twenty years at Foster High School. And so, you know, I know there's a lot of discussion at the state level about, okay, well, this year. You know, there was a period in COVID where we weren't giving any ads and you were getting waivers and so. I mean, it's not just our district, I mean, the whole state went up as a result of this, and so there's some, you know, suspicion about graduation rates, but still. Um, we are, you know, I compared us to, you know, the other district around us and we're, you know. Better than Highline, better than Auburn, better than Renton, about the same as, but better way, so, I mean, we're doing well even within our, um. Our set and the one thing I did want to bring up because it came up, um, I didn't, you didn't list it here, but. That we've done a really good job over the years is the, the students experiencing homelessness, the graduation rate. It turns out we're actually one of the fosters with one of the best in the state. I mean, we're within the top five percent of the, you know, uh, in the state and that, that has been actually true for a number of years. And in this district does a really good job of supporting students experiencing homelessness and it shows up, there's an article in the Seattle Times. About disciplinary rates with very low or, you know, and so, anyway, good job to all the. And and this is actually not just a school thing, it's a community thing because there's lots of supports for students. But anyway, I just wanted to highlight because that, because that's something I'm pretty proud of, that, you know, we've done very, um, many years and it's, it's. You know, it's definitely one of the best in the entire state, so. Celebrate, add to your celebration.
The, our graduation, just the process to do there, well, we'll get to that, I guess, within the presentation, but it's been a pulse in the past couple of weeks, so it's been that online for this year. Uh, so it's been, it's been quite stressful, just wondering that and well, it's kind of, we're feeling we're practicing a lot here, but feeling a lot better here than that. All right, so our proper practice is similar to the idea of course, improving learning, I'm doing that, I assume having such belonging ability. Um, there's last report, stop a lot of culture and building culture within building a lot of COVID. Uh, and how it make us students feel welcome in the building, uh. Lot of, lot of various things we can be focused on in the building, uh, start. Our building itself, how it's structured, now we're seeing images of itself within the building. Uh, so making sure the students feel some belonging from the curriculum, from images in the building, from the clubs. From everything else from the staff that we hired, of course. Uh, so their action is we intentionally connect students to academic career. Uh, social learning and other external sport supports while connecting and communicating with families about students' progress. Students will be engaged with school, will feel supported, a lot of positive experience that will occur that appears with both secondary success. So we partnered, as you know, the early league is one group, uh, work with support for cultural careers, support along with Europe, we already have a Europe team in place. Had a few issues this year, not the programs itself, just getting the right people. Uh, and hiring, hiring has been a bit of a challenge this year and it's too many hiring, correct people that are connected to students. Uh, so that's something we clearly push forward, because at any day, uh, one of the early positions, uh. But that is our year of action. All right, so our focus for reading and professional developments, we do not do a strict emphasis building wide for good areas for reading. However, one area we have focused on within our social department, uh, we've done some question development for apartments and we increase writing. Reading, writing areas, getting students to be able to express themselves, uh, pretty simply writers, especially writers from college and career as well. Uh, so open up this, so writing passing areas, coaching, computer sound, yes, there are social studies teachers been working with coach. Confusion down, yes, the, uh, support them, uh, building writer prompts, rather than ways to student can express themselves again. Uh, not necessarily through creative writing, uh, I guess a little bit mixing creative and technical writing, uh, that they've been able to do in the classroom. Uh, for our focus for math, uh, our neck grades, I know that was one of the questions about a hundred percent passage for August, August, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, my thinking behind that and, you know, hundred percent, of course, again, it is very ambitious, but the thing behind that is we have a number of students who are. They have an opportunity to make up, they fail out with one person, that's they have an opportunity to make it up by passing the second semester or the year above. Uh, we're working to get, and that's a big question, I know, a lot of questions on my, our math department to get additional F T D. To shrink and shrink the size of these under one classes. Oh, oh, very hopeful, and I'll put that out there right now. That would be something that would be very appreciated if possible to shrink that. We do have, um, some co-planning going on with our Alpha One, some of the two of our Alpha One teachers, uh, that was. Set up last school year, um, had a few challenges, you know, I think it's more than anything, it's something that just needs to have some time to develop. Uh, and additional supports and coaching along with that. Uh, but also looking towards summer and summer school, uh, very much would like to get a huge push for our incoming eighth graders. Uh, stake that out with foundations course, uh, so we know we took away the foundation sports last year because it wasn't. Uh, a math credit very was. If we have the opportunity to offer that in summer, it'll give some of these students a chance to get caught up. Take out the foundations and jump right into one, that won't cover everybody in the building, you know, not every student can have an opportunity in some school, but I think if we all work together. We can identify everyone who needs to take those classes, get them set up, and if they need to take out the foundation before taking out the one. We give them there so they can come in and fall inside ready to do that one. Uh, so I feel good about that.
Yeah, I think, I think that, that I mean, really interested in this co-teaching, it's a little bit of a chicken or egg. So for me to kind of go and advocate stronger for, you know, like more lap funding that you could actually use with things like that. You know, I need to say, well, you know, we did it and we showed these kind of results and so anyway. Just as, as you go through that journey, you know, whenever you can find excess successes, let me know because that that feeds into the. You know, advocacy for funding, so.
About how many, um, students you're talking about, um, like about how many are kind of that. Already identified as being a little bit behind in algebra.
Within Foster High School?
Yeah, so again, to like get to the one hundred percent pass a rate, about how many students are behind it.
So we, we had a conversation, we've had a few conversations about this, uh, with our math department chairs as well, uh, but it was by. Approximately two thirty of the students we feel are not coming in at. Prepare for Alpha One, that definition might change from first to person, ideas of what the fear of Alpha One means. Uh, but we have a number of students, uh, spoke accordingly, I guess, or the Titanic test, not prepared in that, um. That's based on what the literature that says itself, but it's basically, I said, a while. Number of students are not coming in.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's really a system.
Yeah.
Why issue, I mean, we need to be working on the math at the elementary grade and those, you know, right on, so that, so the time to end. Acknowledging that we have mobility at the same time and there's new students coming in all the time that may have come from nowhere and, you know, you have to deal with them too, so.
Yeah. And, you know, again, the emphasis on Alpha One as long, you've seen. So they have to study same students that don't pass Alpha One, they, they, they failed the first time, they have more difficulty writing high school. You just says probably number one, uh, single students that will be more likely. Uh, so for our social emotional learning and mental health, uh, again, using our community partners, early league, uh, gear up. We have, uh, young queens, uh, support our students, understanding, you know, not necessarily coming from the professional, miss professional side of things. Place as well, uh, but people, students, I just talk to them, students have a conversation with all other students, have, you know. Peer group, so I'm very, I'm very encouraged by what I've seen, that a number of students, uh, who have been participating, taking advantage of this, like, to. Uh, our advisory class course has important, appropriate, uh, learning, social learning, things, lessons. State of push we have on our athletic directors, chairs, uh, number board, excuse me, more students participating in activities and sports. Uh, and we have launched in the past few months, uh, he was, we didn't have this last year, he was in M T S S. Seems like in class students were asking me, like, we need support, and I asked students. Uh, on the race exactly. Unfortunately, with that, we lost our two leads for our race after the team back in December, so we just got that relaunched. For the new year, the year, so it's going to be more student-based, uh, come from their perspective, you know, we take a lead, a lot of stuff is. The guys from the staff. Uh, so continue to build on that. Uh, noted that we look for a culture, we're having, looking really cultural, continue to build a culture, business students see themselves in school, feel welcome to feel their culture and identity. Respect, uh, earth and foremost, make them feel. Uh, our staff and professional development, here to us conversations on race, relationships beyond cultural competency. For our next Smart Wednesday, not tomorrow, but in February, we'll have a professional Dr. Ted, Dr. Ted, we'll be coming in to have some more conversations. Uh, I feel. That has been one thing that has been very much lacking, uh, through my time at Foster, we've not had those conversations and I know it's. It's, we have so much, everything else. We're talking about races, you know, it's just kind of second nature to me, I realize that this is the case for everybody. And you have a lot of staff members, so I think we benefit very much from that, uh, at Foster, we've got the district. Uh, that's kind of just a kickoff, so we'll be working with her, also be working with her leadership council as well. Uh, to have, see that have those conversations, that's making it one-off, and just beating guys and, you know, get statistics, essentially, hopefully, not this guy. But, you know, really taking things on, um. I will say my things, but, you know, I'd love to have someone else to be able to, you know, restart the work and we've worked, got to work and, uh. Help out with our, our partnerships as well to have those conversations when we're not all the same, I mean, you know, we're in other side levels that we try to break down. The substance conversation there, let's call people else, uh, in a positive way, let's just call people in, uh, if we're noticing any. A language or a depth of mindset coming about, uh, or anything else. So we talked about students in the grace energy teams, uh, and they're very proud to hire to reflect university of our student population. Although that hiring is not necessarily seen in our certified teachers, uh, and that is one barrier that I wanted to get over. Uh, hoping that will HR force to address that and work with my staff as well. Okay, so a couple of celebrations, so we had two students that received five thousand dollar scholarships. The red students, uh, receiving scholarships from Mary's, I can't remember the journalist's name, the announcer from Mary's. Yes, uh, so last year he gave us, he gave one student a scholarship, this year we had two students, uh, get a scholarship. Uh, we had one of our students who recently received a full scholarship to Yale, she's one of our main all-stars, but she's kind of went out in front most. Very popular, which did. We're in February, we're not even in February yet, so I'm sure we'll have a lot more good news and scholarships coming, uh, where our students are, and we're sharing it with you all as well. Uh, should you say right, a couple of half, the avid highlights, students leading financial aid, uh, spending and various activities throughout the area. Uh, also of note, the partnerships with Highland College, those students transitioning from high school to college. Yep, lastly, we have Joe Baker here, the students, lastly, went to show where some of the. Went to show where Senator for a real showcase, uh, and built that partnership.
I guess I would add one other, in addition to the graduation rates for the, the Kenny Ventos students, uh. It was great to see the, the drama department, the production we did, that's been. You know, that, that department was kind of decimated during the COVID time, obviously. And, um, I was really impressed, not only with the, um. You know, the acting ability of the students, which is really, I mean, I've been watching these for years and years and. But also the technical aspects of it, which has been an issue for years, I mean, the lighting, the sound, the sets. Were really, really well done, and so to see that Foster has a traditional history of having a strong department for many years and. To have it just kind of wiped out during COVID, it was really great to see it come back and it's, um, the only. The thing, I was there on Friday night and the only thing that was kind of disappointing was the empty seats because. That show actually would have been a great, um, production for like a lot of the folks in the Shag departments to come and see. Because there was a lot of stuff that was going back to when I was growing up, they had funds in there about that. So anyway, hopefully we can work on getting some of those folks to see the production, because I think they would really enjoy them.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really encouraged, I went on Saturday. Yeah, I'm really, I'm really encouraged, I went on Saturday, it was a man named Saturday, my daughters, they loved it. Uh, I grew up watching movies, so. I was so impressed, I was telling one of, uh, Camilla played, like, ring.
Yeah.
You know, comedic time.
Right, right.
It was doing that, you know, just on being a professional actor, being able to do that. Being a teenager, uh, I pick up on the story, a lot of people hadn't seen the movie, so they didn't necessarily pick up on that, all the jokes there, but I think it's on it. Uh, but I'm really, I'm really encouraged, I'm really pleased with Mr. Hernandez, it's the first time, uh, as a high school, you know, running a high school theater department, and so. I feel really good about it and getting more students out, getting more people participating in the program, uh, getting more mind from about the building as well. And she did an excellent job, kind of stepping in. Higher very late in the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
So she did a great job.
I just hope we can keep her.
I remind her that.
Yeah.
Uh, and some other celebrations here, uh, our students enrolled in the post-secondary. We have about three quarters of our population that are enrolled in bowling, you know, two or four year institution. I've always said, of course, I'm in favor of anything that's going to support our students, support their lifetime goals and get them to their next step and what they want to accomplish in their life. Uh, whether that's college, whether that's military, whether that's, you know, becoming a plumber. Whatever it is that makes them happy, satisfies them, um, we just want to make sure they get great training to whatever they want to do. Rather than foster, got all the education.
Do you, do you have any indication of? The percentage of students going into the trades or?
Oh, well, on there, I think I have it listed.
Oh, that, okay, now I see it, thank you.
And we have a number of opportunities, and I know I need to work more, uh, Jeff, last, the figure last year, we have one young lady in class. A. So those opportunities we know are out there, it's just, I don't think we are. Which is good, we're so close on college and, you know, I'd be able to say it shouldn't be. But that's not going to be everybody's path, I don't agree, it needs to be going straight to college, I believe, they want to go out and stuff out like, before they go there, bro. Uh, so just recognizing that we did have those options out there and when sure our students are aware that. There are some other options out there, if they, unless they aren't prepared to go to college, it's if they financially need some other resources. Or, you know, hey, this is my pattern, like, and I'm embracing, you know, look, because you can, you still. Turn out really well financially and everything.
Yeah, and they're ready to work, we have no idea those people.
Are the students aware that a lot of those apprenticeship programs pay them?
That is a question, and, you know, I'm not sure what they do.
I think Jeff.
That's a very good question, um. I know that bowling comes several times a year, manufacturing class and kind of broadcast is available there. Uh, we're setting up some summer internship support, which could lead to apprenticeships later on in life, if they enjoy what they're doing.
Because I know going to electrical, you, you are paid.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But I, I wonder if students know that, would they, they. Yeah, more apt to tap into those.
Yeah, I wonder, I wonder if the counselors, I mean, are really. You know, where and then kind of pushing it where it's appropriate.
That's definitely, I'll have a council tomorrow, our council meeting.
That might need some training, what's available.
I remember this, and I, I think, uh, Mr. Long unmuted too, so I'm going to, um, pop a Dennis and then him if you want to.
I know that there's sometimes I foster, there's been like tailoring done by those, like, trades and so. Mr. Joe Duffy is one of the fifty four that are, you know, very into the, like, trade, so. I know he's in there, and last time I checked, when I was, like, there were like twenty, thirty names on the list, so. I'd say it's pretty good, you know, a good outcome.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, Mr. Wong, did you wanna, um, did you have anything to?
Yeah, the only thing that I was gonna add was a, a big thank you to the Highline. Um, I think it's the Highline Children's Foundation is what it's called. Uh, that last year they helped, um. They helped, uh, pay students that were in internships that were not paid. Uh, so it got to the point where we had. Everybody that was in the environmental science two class last year, they were. They were paid for their internship that was part of the course. So a big thank you to them and their support.
So a few things that I just want to highlight, I, um, I was one of the, he's asked about, um. Measuring belongingness, uh, and I, I, I appreciate that you're using, um, participation in clubs, events. And and activities as a way to, to support measuring belonging in addition to the C E E data, because of course, like, that's just. Selected anything, right? And so, um, you know, I mean, I think with any piece of information or anything that we're trying to measure that is really unmeasurable. The more little pieces that we can look at, uh, I think is really beneficial, so I appreciate that you're using that, um, as kind of some information. Um, I think another thing I, I wanna, um, you know, even, even if, um, we haven't seen necessarily of, of disparity from year to year. In the number of, um, you know, black students that are graduating, I, I really appreciate the use of. Again, data, there's this piece of data, we're seeing this gap in data, great, let's focus right there. We need so much more of that in our district, um, I, in, in your plan as well, I think it was similar, right? There's thirty six percent of our students that aren't here. That is where we're going to focus on, that to me is how we use like data to actually drive improvement. Because we're focusing on those that need it the most, right, that are furthest from where we want to be, rather than just thinking broadly. So I really appreciate that intention, um, to, here's this point happening with uplifts on this, so thanks for that. Um, I also would love to have some more conversations, and now is probably not the time, unfortunately, but like. What do you believe that district facilitated us in every conversations would look like? Because I, we need to be having those and I totally understand. Actually, I, I don't, I do and I don't, like. Sure, it can become secondary because of all of the things that we just have to do to get by, but like, that should not be the case, particularly when we're talking about. The majority of the percentage of our students, so we need to be having those conversations and if. And and they need to be facilitated, but like that needs to be something that our district as a whole is pushing and navigating and. Really leaning into those conversations instead of stepping back, um, so I, I'd love to talk with you about. Um, you know, or anybody else who wants to really like, figure out how do we do that? Um, I want to do that. Oh, the other, other thing I wanted to, to just say thank you, and I know this came up, uh, last, last week, or last meeting too regarding the recent. We do need to be hiring the right people, and so I appreciate that we're being patient with our hiring, as hard as hiring is right now. It would be easy to just be like, yep, you applied, great, we'll take you, but that is not what's in the best interest of our students. So I, I'm just so grateful for the patience and the willingness to say, hmm, we need a person, but. That's not, that's not quite the right thing. Yeah, yeah.
I have a couple of, um, lessons learned from previous year, so.
And it only creates more work on you, right, and your team, either way, so just, just know that, yeah.
Do you have any ideas in particular how we could make that process easier or?
Or.
To write the people that you need, yeah.
Yeah, wow, a couple of, a couple of ideas, I want. I, I think the black, at least for black.
Yeah.
I think the black college. Require a little bit of funds to get into some of these rare areas, uh, but. I know plenty of people love, that would love to move to, sitting over, that's moving to Seattle, they just don't necessarily know if there's opportunities.
Right, right.
That'd be a start, that'd be something. I know my son actually participated in a program called My Brother's Teacher, which is focused on getting more black men into, uh, early childhood education. So it's duty in that area, uh, I'd love to see something like that cultivated within Tuck Willoughby. I've had a couple of students, black students that were like, oh, you know, interesting being a teacher, I really, okay, you know, you know. I didn't decide I want to be a teacher, it's all a cop, when I was in high school, I had so many family members that were educators, like, there's no way I'm going in. So it's definitely not, that's a cool thing to do, but hearing that, I see that as an opportunity to introduce me, kind of, I can tell my story and you can start up.
Well, if, I don't want to cut anybody short, if there are additional questions or anything else, but it was. Any last minute lingering things? Alright, well, we will, um, then move to adjourn our meeting, so move on, favorite.